Recording in progress.
All right, it's Amy, you and Amy that only wants that address for business. Yeah, the rest of us, I'm gonna go call us to order here. I said this my Pederman Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good answer.
So this is, yeah, we're ready to go here. Let's call us to order, Blue, we're live?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a special meeting of Mayor and City Council, two items today. One, the second is to hear ARPA-PRON's, the first, I believe is in the front row, we're getting an update regarding the Fourth Street Preserve project. So Jim, do you want to come forward and we'll start there?
Good morning, everybody. Thanks so much for having us here today. I'm Jim Ford, 910 Savannah Road in Lewis, and I'm the chairperson of our campaign. And here today Pam Costanzis is a campaign manager, and Paul Sparrow has joined the campaign team as both are volunteering. And they and the other members of our team are working incredibly hard and diligently to achieve our goal of getting the $8 million for the acquisition of the property. So Mike Rawl, it would be here, but he had a scheduled doctor's appointments, not anything urgent, so he was unable to attend. He would have been able to address the historical nature of the property very well since he wrote the book, so.
Literally.
Yes. I'll try to do my best with that, or we can supplement with, feel free to add anything that you come across, okay?
Paul was the history expert, too.
Yes, Paul worked on that with Mike, so when I don't know, you'll know. So the purpose of the presentation today is to just give you an update, and I think it's been a while since we've had the opportunity to do that, and then to remind everyone of the importance of the preserve and for our goal to make that 30 acres preserved in perpetuity. So this is the aerial view of the Fourth Street Preserve, which I hope people now recognize. And you can see that this area is surrounded on both sides by residential development, and it remains the forested area and undeveloped in the city, the only parcel certainly of that size. And we, you know, view this as a partnership with the city and the Greater Lewis Foundation in order to save this forest area. So these are some examples of the benefits of the preserve, and then I'll go into the update of the finances of it. Anytime you feel like you'd like to ask any questions about anything, you know, please do so afterwards. If you reflect and you have some questions, contact us, and anytime you want any information beyond what's being presented today, it's available to you. This slide here shows the numerous, there's numerous animals and plant species that live there, which been identified, probably over 100 different species that are there. These are some of the highlighted ones that maybe are more visible to people, but all of those species are important. And we will try to give them a habitat for their to continue on in the city. This area here, or this slide here, represents an example of the potential flood mitigation that the property offers. You can see its location with the development around it, and you can see the highlighted ephemeral wetlands in there, which means they come and go depending on the water table. But the light green of the darker green area reflects those wetlands areas. And this acts as a large absorption sponge, so to speak, 30 acres within that area. So the water runoff, right now, the water is absorbed mostly. There are still some, you know, drainage areas and so forth, but for the most part it's being absorbed. Should it be developed, it would be a completely different story, regardless of that and the flood mitigation challenges that you would face. Okay? This is a slide that shows the flood hazard potential in the future. So you can see, you may have seen this slide before, but you can see the potential of the water intrusion to this area over sea level rise and environmental changes. This goes out a long way, but it does present and reflect the importance of that parcel right in the center there, is the water will drain towards the creeks and towards the canals and, or the canal and be managed, however, it is managed through the management plan that the BPW and the city would work on together, but it does protect that area quite a bit. So we have naturally the tree canopy that's there for carbon reduction, and our objective is to just have passive recreation there. So you're gonna protect, secure, and hopefully increase the tree canopy for the city. Walking trail there provides tranquility and relaxation, benefits for physical and mental health aspect at a convenient location in town, and I think that's an important factor, too, is that this location provides an opportunity for people to walk there and to bike there. You can drive there, but you don't have to, and that's a challenge sometimes, as we know in the busy times of the year. Getting to a place where you want to enjoy the nature and the environment usually requires a drive or you can encounter traffic, so this is an opportunity to circumvent that. We have a lot of educational opportunities. We've already participated in some. The Cape District, grades one through 12 can benefit this, and they support the opportunity to establish a living classroom there. We have a letter of support from Superintendent Felton. The opportunity for field trips would exist. Last year, you may recall, for the Race for Open Space, we had a poster contest in the elementary school, grades three through five, and we've signed on to do that again this year. So we had about 150 kids participate last year doing a poster with their interpretation of the importance of this preserve. We have an urban community forest model, hopefully to be established by the State of Delaware Division of Forestry. They want to use this preserve as the model for other municipalities throughout the state. So this would become a first, and it's to be another first for Lewis to be able to be the first town to have this community forest model. And it's also a reflection of what's considered smart growth, in that you have the opportunity for an open space preservation around your developed areas. We have Master Naturalist Training and Certification Program is through the University of Delaware Extension. They've already done two walkthroughs, what they call bio blitzes, and I believe you had received the information on the first one. The second one was just done on the 5th of December, where they do like a habitat quality analysis and assessment for identification of plant and animal species. If the city would like to have a representative participate in this next one, we're certainly can arrange that, whatever involvement you would like to have can be available, you know, to you. The idea here is to identify and remove invasive species and replace those species with natives over time. And what they would do is take a small circular area that they call islands and identify that area with invasives, remove those invasives, replace with natives, and then go on to another small area. So, you know, it's not a stripping out and redoing of the entire parcel, it takes place over time. So as I mentioned earlier, the historical significance of this, Mike Rawl has published the book, The First Settler of Lewis, and I believe you have a copy of it, and it brings an unexpected importance to the preservation. We didn't know of the history significance when we first took on the project. And it's interesting that this has evolved into one of the, I think, one of the most important features of preservation for this, in the fact that it goes back to the original deeded parcel in the state. It could open up some additional funding opportunities with Historical and Cultural Affairs and the National Trust, we were still exploring them, and this story is not completely written, there's still more information coming about and unfolding, and it'll be interesting to present that later on, so as a teaser, stay tuned to that one, okay? So those are, I think, six or so benefits that we've highlighted, and I'm gonna go into the numbers now with the acquisition, where we are, and then go to where we need to be and how we're gonna get there. So as you can see with this, we're about $5.6 million now. These numbers are current to the end of November. So we've had additional funds come in in the last two weeks, and it changes practically We have about almost $2 million in private and business contributions, as you can see there, with over 1,200 donors, and the concept has really snowballed and expanded throughout the community for private interests, for business interest, and also other foundations. We actually have people now stepping up saying, you know, we'd like to get involved in the campaign and helping out if we could, if you can find a place to put us to work. So it really has, you know, gathered a lot of momentum, and it started with the city making the original commitment when, you know, we came here a year and a half ago, and stepping up to the plate and allowing us to utilize that consideration and the importance that the city gave the project for additional funds. Okay? So this is the money that we still need to get and how we anticipate this, and keep in mind, these are estimates, everything can change, they're just a way that we can get to where we are. If you notice the previous slide and this slide, there's an additional $300,000 shown on this side, and that is to cover the cost of the campaign. Campaign so far has been about $200,000 since April of '23, and we have until September of this year to continue on with the campaign, so we estimate about another $100,000 for that, for those expenses. So that's why those two numbers don't add up if you either picked up on it now or you go back and look at it later. You can see that the solicited gifts there, when we first started with this idea of, you know, coming up with this breakdown of how we were gonna get to our goal, the individual and business number was close to 500,000, and now it's down to 400,000, as we have received those additional gifts over the time period between when we first started this breakdown and the end of November. Another interesting project here to, or foundation contribution to talk to you about is the Welfare Foundation request for $150,000. We just received that as an affirmative for the entire amount, and it was, I think, the only application that was fully funded. So that was, that one's in the books, it's just not reflected on the number, so we've been able to obtain that one right now. For future funding for this, we have partnership with the city, hopefully again for the 5K One Mile Race for Open Space, which is scheduled for April 5th this year. Dogfish Head is going to donate, each time an electric bike is rented at their inn here, they're gonna donate for the entire year, five bucks for the bike, so if you've never ridden an electric bike, go up there and rent one. They're also gonna do a beer benevolence for us, and we're working on a name now. If you have a name for a beer for the Fourth Street Preserve, give it to us by Monday or Tuesday of next week, work on it over the weekend, and they're gonna do a beer in April for us. So we're gonna try to incorporate that into a promotion with the race, and then we get a couple of nights at their restaurant, Rehoboth Beach, to promote the project as well. And, you know, I'm sure you've taken a look at the Wonder Roast Stout from Lloyd's, so it's, you know, hopefully we'll come up with something creative. They're fun people to work with. We're gonna try a second art show. We talked, Mayor and I talked about with Amy one time, we had a meeting about a potential concert, and I'm working on that with DRBA at the Ferry Terminal now. We're gonna, I'm gonna get together with them next week, they're very interested in doing something with that. We thought maybe the spring, but now maybe it'll go in the summer, and we can utilize their facilities and reduce our costs for that, so we'll see, we'll see how that one goes. And of course, the business involvement's gonna continue on, we have additional businesses involved. Monday night, if you don't have any place to eat, go to Nicola's for Dine and Donut from 5:00 to 9:00, Dine and Donut, Dine and Donate, from 5:00.
Dine and Donut.
They might have a donut there, I don't know. They're promoting it with us, and then of course Mike's book promotion, so lots of opportunities there, and then these are some of the more significant potentials for us. The USDA Forest Service $600,000 request from the feds is coming through the State of Delaware Division of Forestry. That was part of a conversation we had with them when they went to the Open Space Council for 1.4 million that was granted, and the 600,000 at the fed level would be a total of 2 million. We feel pretty good about that one. That one should be coming through in January, February, something like that. Okay. So the project status right now, as you can see, we have Rodney Robinson is working on a preliminary base plan. That is required for a lot of the grant applications. The grantees want to know what's going on, what you might be doing afterwards, so he's gonna have a concept plan to bring forward. The city can then review that plan, we can then go to public and have public comment. The interesting thing with the plan is there's not a lot of potential development or goings-on there beyond the walking trail and the planting of species. Contract agreement and the marketing of this from day one has been no buildings, no structure, no parking, so forth. So the plan probably won't be modified extremely, maybe the location of the walking path or the types of plantings, something like that might be part of what we could tweak out on it, but hopefully we'll get a plan that's pretty straightforward, allow the public to comment and move on. We'd like to talk to the city about proceeding with a volunteer group for, to support the preserve after it's acquired by the city. This would, could represent fundraising opportunities with maybe the 5K continues on, maybe a concert continues on, other fundraising potential through the organization. And one of the most important parts of it is that the Delaware Naturalist Program wants to utilize that area for their hours of community service. So you have a volunteer group already involved and already interested, and more than likely continuing on with interest as more people get involved in that program to remove the invasives, plant natives, do some maintenance, which should be very minimal in that. So the Greater Lewis Foundation certainly has a commitment to continue to assist in funding and volunteer efforts for the project after the city acquires it. And, you know, I've said before and say it again, it's not the idea to hand this off to you and walk away. So whenever we can provide some support, be glad to do so. The post-acquisition fundraising for those issues of drainage, wetlands, and plantings, we have come across different funding sources that were applicable but not during the acquisition project, so when it's acquired by the city, there are some additional funding mechanisms there that we can have. So examples of that are the Longwood Foundation, the Ma Ran Foundation, so Wetlands Conservation Fund, there's the Sussex County Association of Realtors, we'll work with the National Association of Realtors for, here again, example of smart growth for some funding for that post-acquisition. Talk briefly about DEMA, whether or not that would, we could go through them or not, and a federal environmental quality incentive program. So those are examples, they're not written down up there, I'd be glad to talk to you about them, if you'd like more information on them, but there's some, lots of examples of some post-acquisition funding available through funding sources, and then a volunteer group, I think, could certainly help you with that as well. So with that, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the whole team, and be glad to take any questions that you might have.
I had one to start, I think I mentioned when we met, the fact that they're sitting in the Highland Acres Tax Ditch, and what, and we were given a formula recently, we had them in and talked to us, and it's that each lot essentially contributes to that. Are you, were you able to determine what contribution they're making towards the Tax Ditch Authority?
I was not. I did try to research that to give you an answer, but I don't have that, so that's something I'll have to continue on and get back to you with, and I pardon, pardon me for not having that answer, but.
Yeah, no worries, because I think, you know, as you're talking about how to work with the property as it relates to stormwater, my understanding is that they would, they control that, any of those changes to the ditch area itself, so.
The Tax Ditch Association has its control, or because it's a, isn't that basically the homeowners?
Yeah, they're made up of the homeowners, and that's my, sort of my point is that because of the large area, the parcel, does this parcel get a, you know, a certain number of, are there votes carved out there already?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't know.
Okay.
And it speaks also to the obligation that the parcel might have to fund the tax ditch.
Which we understand is not a lot, I mean, it's, I think yearly it's 30, 20, 30 grand collectively, not, you know, so it's not much.
But nonetheless, it would need to be met, yeah.
So, but that's just, you know.
Does anyone know about that continuing on, should the city be the owner?
I forget, they talked about, yeah, getting, the process for getting out of it, and they recommended against it, because to your point, it still serves as a way of conveying stormwater.
Right.
So they, you know, they said, yeah, of course you can get out of it, but why would, you know, they're kind of like, why would you?
So from a standpoint of a resident there, nothing would change. They're continuing on doing what they are doing now.
Exactly, yeah, I just would wonder, like, because they're, they came to us, for example, about rerouting some areas to serve the tax issue. My point is only that if we, if that's part of the discussion in the future, they would, somehow we'd need a, you know, way of coordinating.
Yeah, there might be an agreement necessary to clarify responsibilities and changes in those.
Another one, this just relates to the fundraising efforts, are you planning to do something around tax time to just remind people about contributions?
We, yeah, we usually do, we do it this time of year for the year end. And then we can certainly hammer that theme on April 15th. Would you like to be the leader in that?
I'm just wondering, you know, shifting from, you know, public donations to private donations, I think that is a good time of year where people, particularly in this community, may be looking for areas to give their money to you instead of Uncle Sam.
Right, right. Yeah, we do, we do promote that on a regular basis when we have presentations, but that particular time of the year is a good time to highlight it, yeah.
I can, I can speak to that. Pam Costanzis at 410 Mulberry Street. We did send out a mailing in mid-November to prospects who we've had meetings with and talked to about the, about the forest, and we have received significant gifts. We're receiving five-figure gifts from a number of them, and also just a lot of gifts at the $1,000 level, which is a lot of money for most people. So, yes, we have done that. We also sent a letter out to people who had already made significant gifts, giving them an update on the campaign, so keeping in touch with individuals.
And then just on that same point, you mentioned that the school being interested, I wonder if, I know the county's more concentrating on the ground, but whether they might be, so with the new council in place, whether the county might be open to reevaluating whether they might want to contribute to this opportunity also.
Yeah, we've not had that conversation, and when, I guess when the transition occurs, we can do that and see where they are. I think they will be a little hesitant because of a precedent it may set for, you know, participating within city limits throughout the county, but their opportunities for that might not be as broad as, you know, as thought. So any conversation with anyone along those lines is, we're open to that, you know.
Any other questions from the day?
I have questions. Thank you for this presentation, this opportunity to get this update. I have not had the opportunity, the time to read the book that Mike Rawl prepared or wrote and published. My question, my first question is, has there been, in the research he's done on the history of the parcel, I know that there was a railroad that ran across that property. My question is, has, have you all or the sellers done any kind of environmental study of the property to see if in fact there are any contaminants on the property that exists from its industrial use as a railroad?
We have not done that. I don't know if the current owners have ever done that or not. The remnants of their, of that railroad now is essentially a raised bank where the tracks were. So the answer on that from the GLF is no, we have not done that. We could ask the Rollins family if they've done that.
Yeah, that would be helpful, because that would be part of our due diligence that we would need to do if we're gonna be the recipients of this, of this land. When you spoke about the businesses that you are cultivating and receiving donations from, I did not hear any, the names of any specific businesses, so I'm gonna call out several businesses that are what I consider to be major employers here in the city of Lewis, and I'm wondering if they are participating. I'm asking if BB Hospital, SPI Pharma, or the DRBA, have any of them stepped up and participated in this?
So SPI Pharma has not. BB Hospital is going to participate in the race, and we will ask them to become a sponsor with that. I had a conversation with Dr. Tam about them doing that. Of course, you know, they themselves have their own causes that they try to also, you know, raise funds for as well, but they will be at least out there in the public eye for some participation in this. DRBA has been very receptive to it. They gave us a contribution for the race as a sponsor, they gave us another contribution, they gave us a contribution in honor of Ted Becker, and we're working with them now with the concert for the spring to, or the summer, to utilize their facilities and hopefully have a, you know, either a wave or a reduced expense for us, so that it'll be a benefit to us. So they have been very receptive to working with us, and, you know, having served on that board, I understand the complexities of the politics between the states, and that seems to have been just put aside for the cause.
Okay. All right, and let me see if I had any other questions before I yield. That should do it for right now, thank you.
I have two questions. One, I did see that you called out like a potential, another tranche from the city. When would you need to, like, are you asking for that, to put that in the budget now, or are you saying that that may be coming, or what's your view on that?
So I did not intend to have a formal request for that at this presentation, however. If you would like to move forward, that's fine. I would anticipate that coming forward in the early portion of the budget hearings or meetings that you have in either January, February, whenever you begin that, for that contribution, yes.
Roughly, I'm sorry, Amy.
Well, just, that would be good for you to come, January 21st is.
January 21st is the Finance Committee meeting, and so we're inviting Lewis and Bloom to come. And so we could, actually, we could put the Forest Street Forest on that agenda to make a, whatever your request is. Because what we're trying to do on the Finance Committee is, I wouldn't say streamline, but we're trying to package up all the requests so that the city managers can go ahead and develop the balanced budget. But it'd be a good place for you to present there as well.
Okay, so we'll, I'll make a request to be on the agenda for that meeting, and then we'll be there.
That'd be great.
Does your fundraise still include, excuse me, like, a 300K for maintenance? So I guess that's for you to think about as well. Because the new way of budgeting, we think about a five-year plan, so...
One and a half million dollars.
Can essentially the city, you know, the city's contribution be this five-year plan of getting to that sort of maintenance? That's just some thinking out loud.
So, yes, it would, we would, but we would be anticipating presenting the city with that $300,000 fund through the post-acquisition efforts of, so if there's grant writing that needs to be done, we can help with that. If there's applications, conversations, connections that we have with other organizations or foundations, the fundraising wouldn't stop. It would continue on until we can get that goal. That may trickle down, you know, over time, because people may, the private donations may be done, but the foundation donations will continue on. And as I mentioned with the, how the species would be addressed over time, you know, this isn't going to happen, like, you know, there's going to be an acquisition, and the next month everything's done and so forth. So the, whatever, you know, happens with the plan, the process for the plan, getting that finalized, that's going to take some time. And then the implementation of whatever that plan is will take some time. So during that, that next cycle, we would be continuing to fundraise for the post-acquisition costs.
Do you have one more question? Can I jump in?
Go ahead. No, you go. Go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I have a comment. Go ahead.
I believe it was during your last presentation, it was suggested that you, someone was approaching the new owners of the rehabilitation center that's located in Palatown Village to work out some arrangement for parking on their property. Has that met with success?
We've not done that. I'll do it.
All right. Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention that the Environmental Subcommittee, they're meeting on Monday, and one of the things that they are talking about is establishing, I'm going to call it a tree summit in January or February, where they're going to look at the tree study done by GMB. They're going to look for Marty describing with the success with the Teddy Grant, what, where those trees are going to go. But they're also looking at a tree tender program for citizens. So this might be a really natural, that might be, might be a meeting, you don't have to attend that one, but I just wanted to alert you, and even in a grant, that establishing a tree tender program, the state forester loves the idea. And as you've said, Jim, he really is excited about urban forests. And so the Environmental Subcommittee heard that and said, okay, they want to basically gather the tree people of the city to say, let's propose a new tree canopy goal, and, but more, maybe just as importantly, a plan to reach it. So whatever the goal would be, five years, 10 years, 20 years to get there. But I would think this property would be key to that. So I'll make sure there's some alignment there. But Mary Linda Matty will be the lead, I believe, from the Environmental Subcommittee, and she's on the Planning Commission as well.
And when was that?
They're discussing it at their Monday meeting at 1:00. This coming Monday.
Okay. We'll see if we can get somebody there.
You don't necessarily have to be there for that. I just wanted to let you know, they're just discussing it, and then they're going to be planning a program, you know, like a half-day workshop, just to get all the data of trees in one place. And so the information that the naturalists have done will be part of that. But the tree tender program would be a natural partnership, obviously, from the Environmental Subcommittee and the Forest Street Forest activity.
Right. Okay. All right, great, thanks.
It is, believe me, at the earliest stage, like, they're just talking about it.
Yeah, I have one at two, so I could be there for a while, but talk about the concert.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was wondering if they're, like, the Delaware 250, whether, you know, the fact that there's, especially since there's, isn't there a bald eagle sitting there? That's pretty patriotic.
There's a mating pair there.
Oh, that's an interesting idea. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Deflating. And also, if the monarch does go on the endangered species list, that's a huge, that's all about habitat, so there'll be a lot of funding if that should happen.
We've had an amateur birding group identify some species there, and there's a couple on there that are threatened, that live there. And of course, you know, this changes throughout the year with migrations and so forth. So that's why, you know, the bio blitz will continue on, there'll be, the birders will continue on through different times of the year and different seasons, and the list should grow.
Good idea.
You know, one other thing I'd like to touch on is you're talking about a resiliency fund for the city, and I don't know enough about it. I know enough to be dangerous, probably, as they say. But part of that would be to create some funds to then be able to acquire more funds and to get more for your dollars that are invested. I think that's correct. And I see this as a proactive means of resiliency right there, because your dollar, your one-eighth contribution of the total amount, your 1 million towards 8 million, is a proactive approach towards the resiliency for the community. And it fits right in with the resiliency fund concept, in my mind it does. So I just wanted to throw that out to you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks a lot. And like I said, any other, I'll get back to everyone on the questions that I didn't have the answers for. And anytime you want to get more information, if you want to come to any of our meetings, if you want to come to our events and spend money, you can do that, too.
Jim, do we have a copy? I know that some of the slides we're going to want to look at for the DEMA grants, so...
Yeah, Blue has it, and we can get it to you.
Terrific.
Yeah. I'd like to also thank your staff. Fantastic job. Every time I ask about something, they're responsive and polite. Everything you could ask for, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Before we move on to this, or are there, anyone from the audience that has any comments on this particular, Jim, I don't know? Okay, so let's move then to C2 on here, which is continued discussion, possible action regarding obligating the remaining ARPA funds by the end of the year, like, the 31st here. And I think Elmer had sent us around just a couple of updates. One in particular around Dutchman's Harvest. I think the original number we were talking about was 350, but that did include the Dutchman's Harvest, correct?
Correct. Yes, it did.
If we want to start there, since that's the 200K, would be the largest chunk of that. And I think the newest dynamic now is Milford Housing coming back in, essentially. Is it fair to say that this is back into, from what Milford Housing is representing, an opportunity for 14 of them to be purchase units, equity purchase?
Ownership, yes.
Okay. And we could make our contribution, in this case, through Milford Housing?
Yes, it could still go to Milford Housing.
And when we allocated the first time, did we do that, or we do it through Diamond State, and now we would still need to make a resolution to do it through, or are we already in with Milford Housing?
We should memorialize a resolution.
Okay. All right. So that's the state of play. Does anyone see reason why we should remove the obligation, or I should say, the allocation that we made previously for this purpose? I personally do not.
No, it seems like, it seems like we're back on track with them.
Okay, so that, let's put that to the, are you good with that dynamic? Okay, so that takes us down to the 151, if we think of it that way. So I think, let's, since Mr. Agnew's here, if we have questions, we can maybe go there next, if that's okay with everyone?
Sure.
And I think his, there were essentially two parts to that request, right? There's the fence, and then there's the road. And I think, my understanding, just socializing, is we might be inclined for the fence contribution, but not the road, because there might be other, pardon the pun, but there might be other avenues towards that.
Can I, may I interrupt you for a second, please? We did get an awful lot of information late last night with respect to this Dutchman's Harvest. And I don't know about you all, but I have not had time to consume all this information. I started on it last night. I got in here...
So are you suggesting we, do we have a special meeting scheduled for the, for next Monday?
It would get scheduled today, because the agenda would need to be published today.
Because I, my understanding is that we're here because we need to make obligations at the end of the year. And whether that was for, you know, I think the dilemma last time was, were we making the pass-through to some unknown entity, or are we making it through to Milford Housing?
Well, I think also the other challenge was, and concern was, that what is the county, what their 500,000 and the state and their 500,000 doing? Because there was some questions whether they were going to withdraw their money, but they have not. So we're back to the 1.2 million, including us.
Well, on the memorandum we received, it seems like under B, there were two breakdowns. One was the original proposal, and then there was a second option where only, where 14 units would be sold to households, and a certain number would be rented. So it changed the ratio, and that kind of was in the same paragraph, so it was a little confusing. But my one concern, and I just feel a whole lot better giving the whole 200,000 to the ones that they're buying, rather than the ones that they're renting and buying. So if I had my say, I'd say, okay, they said their 14 units will be sold to households in the 65% AMI.
Right.
And then the others will go into rental, and 42 will be rented to households at the 65% rental subsidy. The remaining 14 units will be sold to households. I just feel better having the money go to the ones that are bought.
They are.
But, but just to the ones that are...
They are. The 1.2 million goes to those 14.
Oh, it's only to those 14?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm fine.
Exactly, yes.
And my, the only reason why I'm raising my hand and ask you to hit the pause button on this is, I understand that 200,000 would be obligated to the purchase of 14 units, those who would be equity owners in the program, in this project. My question is, are we also obligating by, are we also obligating ourselves to the other, well, the other proposals that are contained in these documents that we got overnight? And I...
I think the only thing we're here to do today is to allocate our ARPA funds.
I understand that, but it's intertwined also that there are now going to be other units that are going to be owned or possibly leased by some other entity. Are we also buying in on that, on that business model as well, by obligating the 200,000 to 14 units? In any way, does this, does this mean that we're signing off on, everything else that's been proposed here? This is a, this is, there's a lot of detail here that has come. It's very fluid, and for a business deal, as significant as this is, it seems, it's remarkable how fluid it is.
I can just say that the 200,000 would be for the 14 units. There is additional details in the project, in that email you're referencing, but that would not be part of the agreement between the city and Milford Housing.
If it helps, Tim, I think there's 140 units. 98 of those are discounted, and they're one, two, three bedrooms. 42 are discounted even more, and those are the Milford, originally the Milford Housing focus. Of those 42, 28 are going to be leased, rented, and that's through a Delaware state housing program. And they're going to be involved in that. And the 14 others are going to be discounted to the point where I believe that the current estimate is 100,000 for a one-bedroom, 150 for a two-bedroom, and 200,000 for a three-bedroom, and, because they are all 65%, because of ARPA's requirement, that'd be 65% of AMI. So there's 14 there, and 1.2 million that are coming from the various sources, the county, the state, and us, is going directly into that program to support that mission of, you know, charging very deeply discounted, you know, versus the current market rate. So we're just involved in those 14. I don't know, I personally don't have a problem with, they're all affordable housing. Some just happen to be more affordable, and that's the ones that were, were involved.
Right, but I think, I think, and perhaps Alex can speak to this, and I'm kind of muddling because I'm coupling together my memory and possibly also what I've just consumed in the last couple hours. I seem to think that there's a, an arrangement, and we might call it an agreement, an MOU, whatever it is, some kind of understanding of what the structure was going to be originally for the community, what the city's obligation was, and how the city played into the community going forward, not just at the time of development and transfer of ownership, you know, in this form of sales of units, but going forward. And I, I don't think that, I don't think that, my understanding of that agreement or that MOU is necessarily reflected in this new composition of different stakeholders.
There's no different stakeholders. The same stakeholders are here.
Well, the Delaware Housing Authority wasn't part of...
They always have been part of this, from an ARPA perspective.
It's on page 11 of the...
Yeah, they've always been part of this.
There was Diamond State, and then Milford Housing. I have no recollection of the Delaware State Housing Authority.
Because that came af, they, and Sussex County and us, came after ARPA, after there was, this was being developed well before Dutchman's Harvest, well before the pandemic, and then well before, you know, the legislation that, you know, produced ARPA money.
That's right.
And then all three entities, including two, two other, you know, the state, the counties, decided, in terms of our ARPA money, this is a worthwhile project to support. And so that's always been, all three have always been supportive. What threw a monkey wrench in this was Milford Housing's, you know, tenuous commitment, and then thinking about backing out because they weren't sure they could source and manage all this. And that's something that was internally going on with them, and, but they now are back in.
Right, but even the last time we met as a body, we were told that they were out, that they were not part of it, so now they're back in.
Right.
And again, you know, it's, that speaks to the fluidity of this, of this arrangement. And I just want to make sure that we, as council, are fully informed and fully understand...
I'm, personally, I'm satisfied.
Okay, well, and I've not been at the table with the developer to have these conversations, so I'm relying upon the documentation in front of me to really understand it all. And I haven't gone through it all.
The three questions that we had last time we met, and we asked for this information to be available to us by this week, so we could decide if we want to make a recommendation. I remember this being three concerns. We were a little bit uncomfortable writing a check to something that looked like an LLC that hadn't set up. We're now not doing that. We're going back to writing the check to the authority, so that, to me, makes me more comfortable. We had the question, as Kilo mentioned, on the money. We weren't going to put our money in unless the other people, other entities that already agreed to, also came back. Remember, they mentioned Habitat for Humanity, thought maybe they could get it. So all that's cleared, so that was one of our other charges to the developer. And then we were uncomfortable with all of it turning rental, as Joe said, and now ownership. So in my mind, not to, not to say that you're not raising, you know, interesting questions, the three charges we gave them, they addressed. So to me, I wasn't on council when you made the commitment, but it seems to me like the commitment's back in, and those things we were most worried about are back in, too. So it looks to me like closer to the arrangement of your original plan to donate, given those three things.
I agree. We reached those. I felt better knowing that it's going to the homes that are being purchased. I understand Tim's concern, because when I read this, when I read through this, this seems like this was the agreement for the entire complex. It wasn't just what we would be buying into.
That's correct.
No, I agree with Tim. Absolutely.
So when you read through this, it becomes confusing, because they mentioned a lot of rental, and it's, it's a very complex agreement. And so when I read it, that's what made me ask the question, are we really buying?
That's not part of what we're being asked to do today. Today's simply, are we allocating our funds to Milford Housing? This is an exhibit to... This is an exhibit to the dyna, the dynamics of the ownership and the rental as part of that.
That's right, this needs to be up, and this needs to be updated anyway.
Sure.
Because it's the old agreement.
It's just an exhibit.
Exactly, but I just want to make sure that that was all understood by us.
You're raising good points.
Yeah, we can make this easy decision about $200,000 and what is.
Well, it's not like we just made it. We made this $200,000 obligation years ago, like before.
I'm not talking about that obligation, I'm talking about the 200,000 allocation.
That's what I'm saying, we made, this was one of the first things that we allocated our ARPA funds to.
That's correct.
So all we're doing is, like you said, reaffirming we're satisfied that essentially the original relationship is, thank goodness, going to go forward, you know, and it's best, as best as it can.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And I'm not trying to wash over, I'm just trying to, we, that is one, as I said, we have, you know, it's not a new item for us. That's why I wasn't trying to be flippant with how, okay, it's 200, 200 grand. It's just in the first affirmation of, this was something that we had allocated previously. Is everyone still comfortable leaving allocation?
And there was, and there's a legit reason from council and district and others because of, you know, the Milford Housing backing out, and so dynamics were changed. So of course, we reconsidered, took another look. Preston Shell came and spoke to us a couple times, we asked questions, we've got. But I think we're now at the point where I think we're satisfied, or we're back to where we originally were. And, you know, we've, I mean, we spent a lot of time on this and, you know, it just, I would prefer to move forward.
But I think that clarity that we're signing up only for the piece we're signing up for.
Yeah.
Is, to me, gives me more comfort. You're raising, it's almost as if there's more involved in the deal, but we're not a party to that. We're a funder that used ARPA money in the kitty and, but it's understandable that you have some, not just you, reservation because as, as the deputy mayor said, this thing has moved all over the place, like about every week. And so if this is it and they answered our questions and this is the commitment, then.
Yeah.
I think we're, we're back, we're back on. And they met the deadline that they were supposed to come back and let us know.
Are we supposed to vote on this or anything?
So a contract would be the way to go forward here, a sub-agreement award. There's standard agreements with other entities that have received awards. The one additional condition I would think about putting in that contract would be something mirroring the timeline for Sussex County. So Sussex County is giving Milford Housing a period of performance through June 2025. You, you could include a provision with a similar clawback to use those ARPA funds in a different way if this project falls through because the ARPA funds from the county and the city are combined here to make this work. So if the county funds don't work, the city funds probably won't work either.
That's right.
That's, that's a really good suggestion. And also the history that it's been moving so much, so it looks good today, but will it move again? So that gives us that safety net.
And then Alex, would we be able to also condition, as councilperson elder suggested, that we, we put in the condition that this, these funds are to be used toward the equity, the units that have equity.
And to add to that, it'd be nice if it would be for the more than one bedroom units because it would meet our philosophy of, I think it's our philosophy of wanting to get families, people that will stay.
So you could do something that the percentage has to be split throughout the buildings and.
Sure.
The distribute.
Between one and twos.
And the threes.
Could do that.
Yes.
I, I don't think we've heard from the project stakeholders whether that would work or not.
I believe it was in the original covenants between the developer and the city that there was not going to be all one bedroom. It was going to be a mix, an equitable mix of all the housing types.
Right.
Sure.
And it, and I remember also speaking to that point is that it wasn't that one building was going to be designated as the recipients of, it was to be a blunted community. I hope that's not an offensive term, but.
Yeah, no, that all the units are to be scattered throughout the community.
Yes.
And again, as councilperson elder said, your covenants with the developers need to be updated to reflect the new. That you can reinforce that in the updated covenants.
Right, right.
So Alex, you, you need a motion in, in a sense of giving authority to El Lorraine to execute a contract on our behalf?
In the amount of the 200,000, yep.
Okay, and with all the.
With the understanding that if, is it June 1?
I'll take a stab at it, okay. I make a motion that we grant the $200,000 of ARPA funds to the Dutchman's Harvest project for the purchase, for, to support homes that are being purchased and that they be a combination of bedrooms.
A mix of.
A mix of sizes. Does that make sense?
And I think you do need to add that through the Milford Housing Authority.
And through the Milford Housing Authority.
Okay, well, can we get a second on that basis?
I'll second that.
Can I make a, just a friendly amendment that we add that El Lorraine, we're, we're giving El Lorraine the authority to execute on this, on our behalf?
And another friendly amendment, I think we want to include the language in there that you suggested about Sussex County.
Yes.
You know, making sure that that is, our language is consistent with their ability to clawback by June 30th, 2025.
Are you good with those amendments?
I'm good, it takes, it takes a town.
Tim might have one more.
No, I'm, I'm just going to ask a question, so please, go ahead.
Oh, I just was saying, it takes a town, this is a complex, yeah.
Okay, so we, we have a motion and a second, and Joe's accepted the friendly amendments. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Did you vote, Tim?
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay, yeah.
So we can't take comment on this, I mean, is someone asking to speak on this one?
No, we just had a representative from Milford Housing.
From Milford Housing, okay.
Yeah. It would have been nice for them to have attended.
She is, yeah, she is asking to speak.
She is asking to speak.
Okay. Can you, can you hear us? I don't think we can hear you, what's her name?
Lucia.
Luc, Lucia? Can you hear us? And it looks like, I think we've unmuted you, can you? Okay. I'll give it another minute, is there, are you able to type something in the chat, maybe?
What's that flashing, it's like up top there?
Okay. I don't know, I can't, I don't think we can hear her, she can't hear us, I'm not sure. Okay, we're going to move on. So as I said, I think the next one, because as Mike is here, the, the one thing I did, as I said, there's two parts to that. The, I think the, the road was like 30K and the fence was 24,000 or something like that.
I got an updated number.
Please, come on.
Mike, come on up, because I also just, I want to ask you about how, and Alex too, because I think you mentioned also you're still struggling with an EIN, is that?
I have, I have the EIN.
You do?
Yeah, yeah. What I, what I'm struggling with is getting the attention of the new administration, so.
Okay.
The Meyer administration.
Meyer administration.
I spoke to the current administration a couple of times this week. I still have their support, but it's unlikely that I'm going to get their attention right now because we're moving into the holidays. But I do feel confident that we'll get that approval in the new year, or right after the holidays. Several people have told me that the Meyer administration will support it, but of course, they're not sitting in the chair yet, so that's a bit, bit of a challenge. I will say though, that we do have quotes on the, on the asphalt. The number's around 25,000, give or take, let's say, call it 26,000. And for the fence, we're a little, little over 21,000, so less than 50 overall. So when I last came to you, it was about 60 I asked for. I didn't have firm quotes then, and the quotes I have are from vendors that were, were awarded the contract by the Department of Transportation.
Adjacent parcel?
The adjacent parcel, exactly right, yeah.
Is the fence removable or movable? Should you have a different location in the future, or is this a pretty permanent fence?
It's a permanent fence, but it's certainly movable.
Is this a chain link fence?
Chain link, cyclone.
It's chain link, okay.
So you would, they would be anchoring the posts and the concrete?
Well, we could have. Yeah, I mean, at the moment, the answer is yes, we could move it. You know, we would lose parts of it, there'd be parts that would be lost, but, but the chain itself could be certainly moved and relocated rather than destroyed or torn apart. That would make no sense. I do think this is a unique parcel of land because it has, it's on seven and a half acres and there's a, there's a lot of buffer between this parcel that we're asking for and the nearest neighborhood. So it's in no one's backyard at this point, there's a tremendous amount of buffer.
I had one question about potable water, either for drinking or also for showering. That's not something that is offered currently.
Okay, so we, we have everything, everything's brought in at the moment, but there is, there is utilities on the property. We, we just need funding to get the utilities developed, so.
So you have water and sewer on the property?
Well, we had a building there, right? So, yes, all, everything, all the utilities are present, off, but present. And we could, if we had the funding, we could move forward with, with, with those kind of activities. I, I think that what I asked the council for in my last appearance and what I continue to ask for is, is still at a primitive level. It's still somewhat experimental. The, the asphalt is necessary for emergency vehicles to get in and out, should that be necessary. We did operate the, the pilot project with crushed stone road that was put in by the, by the OMB on, at no charge to us, but the crushed stone didn't last. You know, after 20 or 30 rolls back and forth of the, the buses and trucks and so forth that were coming in, the, the, the foundation began to fall apart. So it, it lasted 45 days, which wasn't an issue, but we'd have, we couldn't drive on it today. It's, it's, it didn't last. But it was good for the period that we needed it, and the state provided it at no cost to us.
You didn't get a maintenance agreement with them for the day, did you?
I do have their support. They did come up from Georgetown a couple of times to do repairs to the property, to the land. You know, at pro bono kind of things, but yeah, no, we didn't, we didn't have a maintenance agreement.
It's just trying to be funny.
No, it's good, it's good.
And failing.
Yep. I will say, we're, we're launching a, a new project, a new project in the next couple of days. It's pretty exciting, actually, so we're, we're engaging all of our homeless residents or homeless guests. Right now, they're in our shelters, at both of the Co-Purple shelters. We're offering what's called Flex Night coupons, which allows them to keep their bed should they not be in the, in the shelter each night, because right now it's on a first come, first served basis. And they're earning that by going to case management. So when they go to case management, they earn these coupons that allow some flexibility on their attendance each night in the shelter. But we're going to expand it beyond that to do volunteer work in the community. So when they're not employed, they're doing volunteer work and able to earn these coupons that they can use for a variety of different things, not just the Flex Night that they find important now, but also using the laundromat, getting haircuts, things in the community that, that we can obtain from local vendors to keep them engaged. So volunteer opportunities, for example, at BB or Lewis &amp; Bloom or other, other projects where they can, they can be engaged in the community during the day actually builds their resume for employment later. So those, those kinds of new ideas are continuing to develop. I have 300 volunteers, so I'm getting a lot of ideas in my way. And we have a number of tiger teams right now looking at the different projects, so it's very exciting. We're looking, looking at something, by March, you won't even recognize this, we'll be completely different.
Let me ask you a question, that's interesting about the Flex Night program you just described. Does that allow your guests to leave their possessions in the shelter where they have bedded down for the night?
Good question.
And then spend their day, you know, without having to carry around their, those possessions?
It's a very good question. So in September, we launched storage lockers for our homeless guests. We have, we have sponsors, including the Village Improvement Association, St. Edmund's, and Casella, you might recognize the trash company, have all contributed to our storage lockers, which we have behind the Midway Movie Theater. So we, we have 13 cubic feet for anybody that wants it, let's say, in a homeless situation, to store clothing, important papers, mementos, and the lockers open twice a week. So without going into much detail, they're not allowed to keep their personal possessions in the shelters, but we find that they have personal possessions, most, most specifically on laundry day, when we're emptying the bags. And so on laundry day, we transport our guests in the morning to the storage lockers where they can exchange or put away things in their lockers. And we also open every Saturday, all done by volunteers. Volunteers man the lockers, it's a, it's a 10 by 30 garage, so like two car garage, filled with 30, 96 gallon trash cans, we like to say 13 cubic feet of storage. The cans are all brand new from Casella. We may actually open another 10 by 30 garage because the demand is starting to increase. But, but that's a way, to answer your question, Tim, that, that our, that our homeless guests can be more invisible on the street, not carrying, not walking around with a shopping cart or a roller board as they walk down Route 1. We found last year that that happens more with our women guests than our men. I like to say the women like to change their clothes, where men can wear a pair of jeans for a month. But yeah, so we, we found that last year, that, that our guests were taking the roller boards to work, which can be uncomfortable and sometimes embarrassing. So the storage locker program launched in September, it's been very successful, and we continue to offer that to, to our guests throughout the community. You're welcome.
Well, what I was wondering is, and I love the holistic approach you're doing, which.
Case management's very important.
Case management is so important.
Well, First Day Community Action, Bernice Edwards and her team are, are with us now every other week at the latest. So we have case management team members coming up, meeting with all of our guests.
I'm, I'm concerned about the lack, I mean, potable water, yes, you can bring in. But the showering, given that there is water in a building, what I'm wondering for council, if we went with the 21,000, if that was something that everybody wanted to do for the fence, but up it to 25 and say, 21 go to the fence and four as a, let's call it a down payment, on getting showers in place. And, and that way you don't have to come back with a quote, and you might need more money and you'd have to raise the money for that, but at least, I mean, if you've already got water on the property, I would, I would think with 4,000, you could actually build some private showers.
I think the only issue is you have to have a con, so, yeah, you can apply that to the.
But by the end of this month, he would have to have a contract to do that?
I'd.
I believe that's true, isn't it?
It's only the 13th, does he have to have a contract? No.
Does he have to have some kind of?
Oh, by 2026, yeah, 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 that's.
We have to have a contractor, the city has to have a contractor.
That's right, okay.
Amy, that's, that was my concern also when I heard this. The, the water, to me, seems very important. Even if, if you remember the old, more rudimentary type campgrounds they had at the state park, where they had the water just draining into gravel tiles where they could get potable water, and they had showers out there that kind of drained on the stone, you know. I, I don't know what the codes, building codes would permit.
It's incredible, but you don't need a code on state property, the state can do whatever they want.
Well, I, I think water is.
It's true.
It's, you need it.
So I think, may I, I'm not putting words in your mouth, this is a form of a question. I think what you're suggesting is the $4,000 delta or bump would be, I'm going to call, I'm asking you, would it be, in effect, seed money towards the idea of putting, bringing potable water or bringing showers specifically to the site? And those showers could be, I'm thinking in the form of, I've seen showers in the form of trailers elevated and, you know, that kind of thing.
Another, another big story at our shelters, so we, we just signed an agreement with United Church of Milford that brought us a three shower trailer.
There you go.
And it's now, if you're driving up Route 1, it's now parked next to the Parish Life Center at St. Jude, and we're using it beginning Monday night with our, with our, in our men's shelter. Our women already have showers at the Lutheran Church of Our Savior. We didn't have showers at the men's shelter. Now we have, it's a three shower system that comes on the back of a trailer that you can pull with a pickup truck. And it's currently parked.
At the church?
Yeah, you can see it when you drive, drive past this morning, it's there.
And those church.
We have it for the whole season, we'll have it till March, so.
Right, and those church shelters that are being used now, they, do they. Right, and those church shelters that are being used now, uh, they, do they close down during the, I'll say, spring, summer season? Is that right?
So the shelters open from December 1st to March 15th. Taros closed, closed the day before the shelter opened. Everyone moved from taros into the shelters.
Right.
Respectively, men and women. Um, and it's the current plan of the LLC that you're contributing money, that we would begin at, at the point where Co-Purple closes. So the Co-Purple shelter will close March 15th and we would open the next day.
And then you would open immediately and then?
That would be the plan, yeah.
Right, okay. So your operation of season is like a five or six month period, right?
Well, the beauty of it is that, um, you know, unlike, uh, let's say Spring Board where you have these, uh, uh, I don't know, $6,000 cabins, um, they need to be heated in the wintertime. We don't necessarily have that, that operating cost, so, uh, we're moving into the shelters. You can imagine that if we get a continuation from the state, the terrorists would operate until November 30th, close again, shelters open, shelters are open during the winter months, they close in March, terrorist opens the next day. It's a low, uh, low-budget, self-governed camp that, um, was very successful for 45 days, as you may have observed. Um, the success was well beyond imagination. My, uh, my volunteer base has doubled already. So we, we finished last year, uh, about 150 volunteers and we're now well over 300. We had more than 300 people came to the information night as a result of taros and just the awareness, right? So more people in the community are aware of the challenge that we have for the least of us and people showed up and we have a very generous community. I mean, Lewis is a very generous community, but well beyond Lewis, we have a lot of generous people that, uh, that want to help in many different ways and the response has just been overwhelming, just, just really terrific, so.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion to add 4,000?
I was going to say, you, since you, you want to frame up a motion that you're thinking?
Sure, sure. I would like to, um, make a motion that as part of our ARPA allocation, we authorize 25,000 to Tharos.
Tharos is the proper LLC?
T-H-A-R-R-O-S, Tharos. It's a Greek word that means courage.
Courage, right.
Very good.
To Tharos. Um, and that we would direct those funds, 21,000, uh, for the request for a fence and the additional 4,000 would be seed money, um, for you to use, um, for public health in potable water showers.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much.
So we've got a motion. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
A second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Mike, thank you for coming in and just your selflessness of, you know, looking out for.
Happy to be here. Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you.
Mike, do you have a business card?
Uh, I'll send you my contact. Uh, by the way, your, your name tags are backwards there, just.
Oh, okay.
Khalil today.
Khalil has my contact.
Everyone must think we're interchangeable.
Helping me.
Joe, I'll, I'll send you my contact information.
That, that was actually me, Mike, Khalil didn't get the hint.
No wonder no one's throwing anything at me today.
There you go. All right, thanks.
I switched the side.
Right. All right, so in my math, that takes us to 126, okay? So, um, the same day we had, uh, the lady from the community center show and her ask was for 15K and I think the representation there was essentially that allows them to operate for another month. I gave them, or maybe two months.
No, no, it was more than one month.
It's like a, a winter and a spring.
It was a winter and a spring, she had two, right?
So in my mind, that was one of those things where, you know, as you said, our folks in our community, meaning people who we see in our community are using that.
And what was her ask? How much was it?
15, 15, 10 for winter.
And if we support what Mike was just here to put forward, this is an auxiliary unit of that, this helps them get to, out of that situation hopefully or.
Well, I'm both Nancy Alexander and Mike mentioned that a lot of, a lot of terrorist residents go to the CRC.
So in my mind, I think we're helping ourselves further that investment by maybe giving towards this one.
Right, I totally support that.
Any, any thoughts on that? Again, just for a reminder, you know, I, they, it's a support center, so they go there for, you know, to, I, I think that was one of the areas where again, they could get, uh, lead their, their things for the day, use the phone, uh, the computers, things like that, so sort of like a, an office space, if you will, and a job application too and things like that.
So and again, their total ask was what?
15.
15 total.
Which I think.
10 for the winter.
For two different projects.
10 for the winter program, five for the summer.
Yeah, and I think that conservatively, I think that was what we heard, was I gave them either a two or three-month extension of what they norm, of the seasons that they normally offer.
Yes, kind of shoulder season, they were.
Need a motion for that?
Yeah.
CRC.
I'll do this one. I make a motion that we approve, um, request from the Good Community Resource Center for $10,000 for their winter program and $5,000 for their summer program.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think with all of these, is it, is it okay at the end, maybe if we make a motion that says we authorize El Lorraine to execute on all of them and just save that for the end? Okay, I think we missed the last two, giving those instructions. So remind me at the end that we, that we do make a motion on that, that, um, we give staff the, um, authority to execute on them. So this takes us down to 111,000.
Right.
Okay, um, so I think we talked about, there was 30 that was allocated, that's since, subsequently come out of our MSA or our street or.
20,000, we had talked about 20,000 to reimburse for the, uh, patchwork on the roadway, Second Street and West Third Street, that did come out of municipal street.
So that's already spoken for, but under that same vein, I think I've spoken with some of you about the refurbishment opportunities that there might be for us down on, um, Second Street in terms of refurbishing the sidewalk, you know, doing some refurbishment work there. So if we wanted to think of that same amount, 30, you know, 30K towards that project or something like that.
I thought that would be a good project. I thought the thing that might prevent us from doing it would be the timeline because if, if we, if we would commit to that now with a vendor, is it okay for us to commit and then they do the work when the weather clears in the spring?
Yeah, yeah, the work just has to be done on time.
Yeah, I was going to ask a similar thing, like can we allocate, in a sense, because it's our project, can we allocate these ARPA funds to ourselves with that same timeline that by 2026, we can then enter into a contract? Okay, so does that make sense what I'm asking for essentially?
Are you asking for the, the reimbursement for a sec? Are you, you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is since we were thinking of that as a 30K ARPA allocation, but it's, uh, it's been allocated through MSA that we were already thinking about it, so maybe this is another worthy streets project that's ARPA eligible that would help ameliorate the cost of.
And if 30K was, was that just a figure that you came up?
What was there, my understanding is that we have got an initial ballpark, which is like 130K, so.
113.
113, oh, okay, that's cool. But 30, yeah, so, I mean, that was just my thought.
Okay, because we've allocated during this fiscal year 20K for sidewalk repairs on Second Street, so that's not.
Which we've done.
No, we haven't.
We've done roadways. We've done the roadway patching.
So the sidewalk is, yeah, this, we allocated 20K for maintenance on that sidewalk on Second Street and we haven't spent that. So we have, what you're suggesting would be ARPA dollars of 30 plus match.
Okay.
That's what you're, so I'm just.
I'm just now suggesting the idea that we allocate some ARPA funds towards that project because we can.
Yeah.
And the, the only reason I came up with the 30 is because it was put on our menu before.
Right.
As a, as a figure. That's the only reason I was coming up with the 30K or it might've been 20, I can't.
What would be helpful to me is, uh, the money's starting to, there's 111 left, so 30, and then we had how many other projects that totaled 111? We had a couple others.
Well, there was the, um, water station, which I do agree, I think Austin gave us good advice there, which is.
I did too.
Let's do one and see how it goes, you know, which I think at that, those were how many, how much for one of those?
6,000, 6 or 7,000.
Okay, so let's, let's bust that out.
So could that?
Can we take a motion? Let's get that one, since we're all agreed on one of those.
Do we have an idea of a cost on that?
6,000, we'll call 6,000 on that. So let's allocate 6,000. Can I get a motion on that basis?
Can I, can I just ask a question for? What if we bundled the 30 and the 7? Let's just say it's 40.
I like that.
And say it's 40,000 for public health and safety and let, and, and then we'd say these are the projects.
You can use it.
Yes, for these. So that, because you don't know when the contracts come in, you've got a little bit extra, so it, but it's all to that same intent.
I like that.
Rather than lots of individual lineups.
With the idea that if in fact the contracts come in less than, what do we do with those ARPA dollars?
Because.
She'll find.
I'm saying that they go to public safety and.
Get out there with the asphalt.
Yeah, exactly.
When you were talking about the.
Don't think that'll happen.
I don't think so. I think your contracts are going to come in higher than this amount.
And this goes along with this, if we would put a watering station there, can we also put a bike rack there so people can park their bikes to go to the watering station? Can that be part of that whole project?
Well, let, I, let's go with Amy's, which is, let's allocate 40K to El Lorraine to utilize on ARPA eligible funds.
Correct.
Before the end, she needs to allocate them before the end of the year.
Right.
That's it.
Right.
And we won't need to make that part of the motion to give her permission because this will be giving her permission. So can we get a, a motion on that basis and then, let's make it 41K, that way we'll have 70,000 left and that'll be easier for us.
Okay. Can you make that motion? That's hilarious. Okay, I move that we allocate 41,000 of ARPA money, um, at the discretion of the city manager for projects that, um, address public health and public safety within the city.
Okay.
Just a question. We have 70 left. Is there any chance we want to put a little bit more of that money into the 41?
Well, let's see that at the end.
Can we balance that later?
Okay, I'm with, I'm with Tim here on this one.
We have other, we have other requests.
Okay, so.
I need a second.
Second on a 41,000 to El Lorraine to use on our.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I think that's where we are. I think one of the ones that we heard and, um, BPW mentioned last night, and I appreciated their, their stance, which was if there is money available, they sure could use it towards the water tower, but they weren't looking to supplant other, you know, worthy causes. That, that was, all of them felt that way, but if there was money left that, you know, they've got a delta of, you know, a million bucks, you know? So there, again, somewhere, there's, there's money that they can spend it on and quickly. So, um, that's one I'd put out there. There's, there's 70 left, that's not to say that we use all of it there, but, um, you know, I think 35, 40K would, again, help them. I made the joke yesterday that could help pay for their porta potty rentals, but that's a, that's a reality of, you know, any construction project.
Right, exactly.
I actually, I speak to this. I appreciate the way they're, they passed a resolution last night during their meeting and I thought it was really well crafted, uh, because it didn't nail down a specific amount, it just said that they were in effect, they would be happy to receive these, whatever dollars. Um, I'm paraphrasing, Mike Hoffman did a much better job crafting that, uh, message than I just did. I actually think that appropriating the, the balance, and I think we're at $70,000, to, uh, to the BPW is a good use of ARPA dollars and it meets completely the purpose of ARPA dollars as it was originally released to the nation and it remains compliant with the ARPA flex as well. The entire community, everyone in Lewis will receive the benefit of whatever water is put in that tower and by offsetting some of those costs, the entire community, all their customers will, uh, will share in that benefit. So for that reason, I am supporting the idea that we allocate the full 70K towards, uh, the BPW.
Just for clarity, for a potential motion, it's not exactly 70K. I think you have the number.
The remain, we can say.
Yes, we do earn interest, so you might want to just say the balance.
So we could say the remaining balance of this.
Excuse me, okay.
Can I just, can I ask a question? And this is in no way to embarrass the BPW, but last night they did have a, a resident come up and talk about the water, which we all aware of from the, the work that's to be done in a couple of years. So I have a question that whether in allocating those funds, can that fund, can ARPA funds be used to provide bottled water or fill, or off, or offer credits towards filters, for example? Okay, um, do you, do you, do you guys feel comfortable forward, coming forward and having that conversation right now or do you want to punt on that?
Batter up.
I mean, have, I guess a question I have for you is, have you looked at that number to see if, if we were to go that route, what that, how much that would cost for the next year?
The first thing I want to say is that the resolution, and Tim, as you pointed out, that, you know, Mike.
It was just a motion, it wasn't a resolution.
A motion, yeah.
I apologize.
That Mike Hoffman had made that to memorialize it was strictly for the water tower.
No, understood.
So any change in usage would have to go back to a board.
We could theoretically give the water, we could theoretically make an allocation to purchase water as a city. So I guess my question is that, have you ever had, in, when the, when the Ford Street folks came up originally, did you ever look at like, because I know they asked for it.
The only thing I don't know of is if you're, if you're providing it to us, it's not an asset that's owned by the BPW, so I don't know how from a, yeah, from an account, because I, I believe the way that it's written in the existing agreement is it's going to water and sewer infrastructure, um, but it's not, if you were to do some sort of offset credit or subsidization, it's not owned by the BPW. So I don't know how from an accounting perspective that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not infrastructure, it's a commodity.
Right.
So we don't have.
Maybe you could ask it in front of the client. Trey, there.
I mean, like I said, we could still, if we knew a number, we could say, well, we'll hold back 10,000 for ourselves or whatever that is and do, and, you know.
I don't, I don't have a full appreciation of what we're talking about regarding filtering and water for the Burton subdivision. I was not able to attend that meeting, so I'd like to be more fully informed because I do believe that there are some issues over there that need to be addressed.
It was, it was a gentleman that lived, I think it was 512, if I can remember correctly.
Yeah.
Taylor Cameron was his name.
Oh, right.
The second, so if you come from the school, I think it's the second house, it's brand new, I think they moved in September.
It's actually, he, I spoke to him after the meeting, it's actually the, the last house on Dupont on the right-hand side is what he, how he described his location and it is 512 Dupont.
Yeah, and I think the, the message was, um, it wasn't nearly as bad, I'm paraphrasing, wasn't nearly as bad from a sediment issue, um, with the automatic flusher, but then bad from a sediment issue with the automatic flusher, but then the school had raised the concern with the automatic flusher with the kids. So we discussed last night hard piping in the auto flusher into a catch basin to see if it could run throughout the winter time and not, you know, disperse out in the road.
So that's a solution, more permanent solution you're looking for to bridge the gap?
Yes.
You know, then.
I should say on the water tower.
Exactly. I think then our message is we've given, the BPW needs money, we're going to allocate them the remaining funds because, I mean, they have lots of projects. I mean, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, so Andrew, to your point, this would be the interim fix, hard piping the auto flusher, and then the permanent one is the project we're working on, which is replacing the pipe.
Yeah, I get that. I think we're all the same. We all have empathy towards them. I mean, that isn't too, you know.
Just wanted for the record, just to be clear.
Understood. I know you guys are, and you mentioned last night that you can't make up for what was, you know, eighty years of pipe that was replaced before your time, so.
Right.
So I think the motion in front of us is simply to.
Well, no, I don't, are we still, do we have a motion?
No, we don't have a motion.
Okay, okay, because I do want to, I'm throwing a little monkey wrench in here, but it's a good monkey wrench, and it benefits the, don't look at me like that, Tom.
No, no, no. Now that he got his name tag.
I have a ten-fourth of all meanings.
I know, and now we're trying to get, but one of the things we had on our list here. There you go. Smart move, Joe. So I'm also very supportive of any remaining money that we dedicate to our partners at the BPW, so I have no problem with that. Nevertheless, we have a concern, we have an issue that we've got to get on regarding the Army Reserve Center that we all have invested in, and that is an environmental study of the ground contamination. And, you know, we're getting a lot of pressure from the Army Reserve, I mean, not the Army Reserve, excuse me, the Army Corps and others to, you know, decide what we're going to do with the building, demolish it, do lead abatement, and we also need a study, which they're not going to do, of the ground. And they have information that they've shared recently that they removed a tank in nineteen ninety-nine from underground there, so they have information. But what I'm getting at is of the remaining seventy thousand, whatever, I would like to throw into the conversation that we include funding for this study. That way, and then whatever is left over, we can allocate for the water tower and others. We need to do this study. I mean, you know, it's all happened in the last few days, talking to Senator Coon's office and others and who talked to them. They're getting really annoyed with us, and they're potentially on January sixth going to move forward with lead abatement because, you know, they haven't heard that we want to demolish it or whatever, so they're going to abate it. But I think we all kind of agree, we're most likely going to demolish the building, and this is.
It has to be determined.
This is, to be determined, but, you know, there's, you know, there's no real, anyhow. But to your point, Tom, that you mentioned previously, my concern is as we are getting close to suddenly, we just found out January sixth the other day that they're going to do this, and I'm worried that they're going to do lead abatement, and then we're going to tear the building down. And you mentioned one time a wasteful, from a taxpayer perspective.
Waste of taxpayer money.
And so what I'm saying is, I'm not sure we have enough information right now to make this decision, but, because this new information just came to light, and I would like us to kind of, I mean, if we can, I hate to keep postponing this stuff, but I do think that some of the money could be used for this environmental study, which also benefits the BPW, and that way, we don't have to come ask you for money for a study, a joint study and something like that, and then the remainder would be for the water tower.
Well, Joe, if I can, may I address you as that?
You're not.
Khalil, this is the first time hearing that, and no harm.
Which is why I'm not saying, I heard this yesterday. Yesterday I learned this.
If that really is the requirement, that they're not going to do a ground assessment, then it does need to get done.
Right.
And I would just leave it up to then, we will take whatever money is left after that, as I think you've all agreed, you know, and put it towards the health and safety with the water tower. So no issues whatsoever.
But we don't, we haven't even, you know, reached out to a consultant to see what that might cost. We just literally found out yesterday, at least I did. I spoke to Ellen Lorraine about this, and it just, you know, it's a timing issue. It's like they, like, they want to know by December twentieth from the city what we're doing with that building, and they've already scheduled lead abatement for January sixth.
Can I ask you a question close? Sorry, do you guys have to stand through all of this?
No, 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 it's all right.
So, I mean, nobody wants to, you know, waste taxpayer dollars, of course, but if they turned over the building to us and we know, and they know, we have lead and asbestos issues, then when we, should we choose to demolish it, that will be an increased cost for us to address lead and asbestos. My question is groundwater is different, and under, underground storage tank, when they removed it, they had to follow some things. So, okay, they had requirements to meet when they removed that tank. I still think we do need a groundwater study, but I just feel like there's another option, not another option, there's another topic, which is even if they turned a building to us, I'd rather have a safer building so we can have options. There may be the option of tear down just that one wing. I mean, I don't know the answer to that.
We don't know.
But I'd rather have a clean building to deal with, that they would take care of.
Which opens options.
Which opens options for us. And so even if we have to tear it down, at least we're tearing down something that has been abated. I know that sounds like we're wasting money, but no, because we're going to have to spend more money.
Even if we had to do it, we'd have to have.
Exactly.
People in masks, you know, doing whatever.
So I like, I like what you're saying about the groundwater, but related to the building, I'd rather it receive, even if it takes a little longer time, a clean building.
I agree with you, Amy, and my rationale for that is that we're looking, you know, we have the finance committee, we're looking forward several years, but we don't know where our finances are right now, and it could be three to five years before that project gets started. And if we take the building, we want a clean building. We could use it perhaps for other things until we do decide to demolish it.
But it could have an interim role, maybe, you know.
But I think to make a foregone conclusion that we're demolishing it, we've not been through the process yet.
Right.
And I think that needs to happen. We need to make sure we have the monies for what we think we want to do.
And I can imagine when you're dealing with the office, they probably are wondering, like, what's going on down in Lewis? Like, so this is saying, yes, we want you to give us a clean building, so we're taking it, but we'd like.
So do you want to make a motion?
I know that's separate, but, well, you don't know the amount for the groundwater.
Well, I think what we could make a motion that we dedicate the remaining funds for, but we'd have to, we have to move, I mean, for a ground contamination, I don't know what the property, a ground study.
Do you want phase one and a phase two?
We do want a phase one and a phase two.
We want a phase one and phase two environmental study of the Army Reserve Center site, and the remaining funding would go towards the water tower project of the BPW.
The only thing is, and I know this is all interpretation based, but our preference is to take the reserved approach and allocate before the end of this year, because there is, I mean, my personal opinion, there's no clear language on the whole allocation piece. So our preference is to allocate any fund, any and all funds by twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
Right, right.
Because we are not stepping foot into that landmine of interpretation on the contractual obligation.
Can we do something, can we do something like this? What if we gave you the total amount and you paid for the environmental study? That way, you'd have the money.
Maybe they don't know what the environmental study.
We don't know what the environmental study.
I mean, I would think it wouldn't be that expensive.
Nice try, Joe. I like having you on my team.
So Janelle, you're familiar with this. What do you think it would cost roughly? I mean, again, no one's holding you to this.
If you get a phase one, I can try and find what that invoice was. I was saying, it's probably a couple thousand, but once you get to phase two, oh, whatever, now.
And it's only going to depend on what the, you only need the phase two if the phase one finds something. So if the phase one finds, doesn't find anything, you don't need the phase two.
And if there was, what I will tell you from the phase one we did at Schley was, if there was any inclination that there was.
Anything.
Anything there, they would recommend a phase two.
Sure, okay.
And in this case, it sounds like there was an underground storage tank on the site. They're going to want to do a phase two of that area of the underground storage tank.
And just again, I'm not, no one's holding, but what is typically a phase two on a five acre, I mean, what could that, what could that cost?
I haven't done that in a very long time, so I.
I'm going to say twenty-five plus.
Oh, oh, that's low.
Does it take long to get one set up?
I only know the phase one of a couple thousand. I don't want a phase two.
I mean, just as you said, it depends what you find, but I think you're in the hundred thousand dollar range, to be honest, for a phase one, phase two. Yeah.
How do you guys know? Do you?
Well, because I've done a lot of environmental work, and I can't remember one under a hundred and fifty thousand.
Get out.
If they find something. So again, it's, if it's clean in phase one, but they did send us.
They sent us environmental report.
But did they send only air in the building? Yeah, so they didn't do the land.
But they're sending us, per Kate, Ellen Lorraine, I told her to reach out to you, the paper on the nineteen ninety-nine removal of the tank. And, you know, so that is something that we're getting. I asked her if we can get that. She said, of course, and so.
So I apologize, I have to.
Yeah, I understand.
We'll get you the number. There's somebody coming towards you.
Yeah, just recognize, any perturbations to the motion last night is going to require another board meeting, and I don't know that.
Well, I don't think that harms us because we can simply make the allocation to BPW, right? For us, it doesn't need to be specific to the project yet, right? It just needs to go to them.
Exactly.
And then we would allocate it.
Application requirements here, yeah.
All right. I'm sorry for having you on.
I think we should make our ARPA allocation clean to the water tower, okay, to BPW. But I think what we should get on this right away, related to what data do they have, let's look at the, so hire an environmental attorney who's going to look at the results from the air studies that they've already given to us, and also the underground storage tank. When they removed it, you know, if it was all encapsulated, one guy that we met with, or the gentleman that gave us the tour said, oh, I think it was empty, and I'm like, that's interesting. Empty? Was it really empty?
Right.
So you just want to hire an environment, so you could probably hire an environmental consultant to look at the data for twenty-five thousand, and they would be on call, they'd be on call to look at all data, because really, none of us are trained to look at that data in the right way. And then we're going to have to go through the whole, as Joe said, the whole bond process, which will be much easier if we have a clean facility.
Yes.
Do you want to?
This is not on.
So this is not, so I'm saying, I think the amendment, well, just because it was brought up as a possibility, I think we should have the motion to direct the balance of our funding to the water tower. Does, as you said, it serves everybody, but then I think we have got to really get going on the.
But I got to tell you, I've been asking about this for a long time now.
So.
I mean, excuse me, I mean, we have been, I've sent a number of emails about this, and I will tell you, I didn't appreciate getting yelled at almost yesterday that, what are you guys doing? You know, and I mean, and I keep saying we're working on, and so, I mean, that's why I brought it up. If we're going to dedicate, that's fine, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I am, but that's why I wanted to at least throw it in there, so we can actually have some money to do this, because if it's about money.
Well, if you think that the original portion could be around twenty, twenty-five, do we hold that back?
I don't think we have the data to be able to make that decision. I think it's, we're going to have to incur costs, and so this gets into a conversation of how we get moving on the Army Reserve.
Yeah.
Okay, which is fair, and sorry, you had to be the one receiving the.
Well, I mean, it's fine, no, no, that doesn't, I didn't lose sleep, I'm just saying, this really needs to be, especially since we're looking at long-term budgeting and stuff, we need to get going on a very basic thing.
We do.
We don't even have possession of it. People keep saying, why can't you put something there, the parking, and we don't even have possession of it.
So can I make, are we able to, at this meeting, I know we're going to approve this, but can we make a request that we delegate to Ellen Lorraine to contact an environmental attorney and to get the appropriate?
It's not to contact, you're going to have to bid for it because, no, this is going to have to be an RFP. This process is not quick because you're going to want, no matter what grant money we get or bond money, we have to procure it according to federal requirements.
So can we ask her to start creating an RFP?
Mm-hmm.
So that we get this on the docket, like, as soon as possible?
I think that makes total sense.
I don't hear anyone.
We've got to start somewhere to it.
Okay, let's go for it.
Phase one was eighteen fifty on Schley Avenue. So that was, that's the reference. When we paid for the phase one on Schley, it was eighteen hundred and fifty. Eighteen hundred and fifty dollars.
I don't think it's going to be that.
And did that progress to your phase two?
They, so what they do is they go through and they ask you if you have any drawings, and they ask you if you have tanks. They come on site, they look, and then they say, well, you had tanks on site, so we would ask for a phase two. We didn't because it was for the battery project, which didn't move forward. I was just going to say, if you want to have it in there as like an earmark, not to undershoot us, but you could do fifty for us and use the rest for any, for any sort of environmental piece.
Okay, why don't we do that then? May I just ask a, in a weird kind of question? The fact that this land is, the Army Reserve property is not, we've not taken possession of it, do we have any privileges or rights to actually be on that property and test, do testing and so forth?
No, they know that we want to do that, and we would just simply request that, you know, hey, we need to do this. I mean, they're not going to deny the fact that we want to make sure that, yeah.
Okay, and the other question I would have, and I, really, this is an important discussion, and I wish we were having it, you know, that our agenda allowed for this discussion to be taking place. My question is, is the Army not responsible for remediation? Are they not responsible for making sure that the property, the building and so forth that they turn over is not hazardous to the community? And I thought.
So that's a fair question. So the conversations that I have had with them directly and with Kate Rohr of Senator Coon's office is they were required to do a study of the building and remediation of the actual building. They are not required to do, they are required to give us all the information about environmental studies, but they are not required and wanted to do anything on the ground, per both of them. Yeah, both of them told me that. I did ask, could they, instead of demolishing, using the money to remediate the lead abatement and do lead abatement in the building, could they repurpose that, those, that funding for a ground study? And I was doing, asking that because, again, we would most, I'm thinking for everyone to most likely demolish the building, so let's, why remediate the building, then demolish it when we could potentially use that funding for a ground study? They came back, I found that yesterday, no, we can't, you can do it, but it'll take years to get a new reauthorization from Congress and legislation, because that's not what the money's for, to get a repurposing of it. So that's kind of where we are, to your point, but I don't, they have told me, Tim, that there is, they don't require, their regs don't require them to do a ground contamination study when transferring a property to another entity.
So it does sound like, and thank you, Austin, for being generous for the community. I think we should hold back thirty thousand and say that that money is for us to engage, according to federal procurement, an on-call, I think the city needs, and I don't know, Alex, if you have this expertise within, but an on-call environmental attorney, maybe it's an environmental engineering company too. So thirty thousand on-call so that we have technical resources to rely on, and our timeframe's going to be fine because we've got to get going on this anyway. So the clock is ticking, and so this person or company would be providing us all that kind of support, looking at the building, looking at the ground study, looking at the data that they provide. Seemed to me like that is a good use of funding.
I agree.
Right, and it gets this project off the dime because it's stuck.
So just an environmental consulting company?
Right.
Yes.
And they'll probably have an attorney on.
They will, they will have an attorney. So I think we should do that because that moves that and then the balance of it goes.
So can we turn that into a motion?
So the only issue with doing that is the, I'm not sure how long the federal procurement process will take.
I mean, if, the federal procurement, it's just the process of how you announce an award, so I've done them in forty-five days. It's just getting the scope right, and you advertise it in state small business, in other words, there's just steps to do it, but you can do it in sixty days. It can be done in sixty days.
I think the one issue there, and nothing wrong with the substance of that, just from ARPA standpoint, is getting the funds transferred from the city to another entity by New Year's of this year, sounds.
You can't make it. That would be impossible.
So can we do what we did with the other funds and transfer them to ourselves for that purpose?
I think we're going to be able to have a contract for the second street so we can enter into that, the improvements, sidewalks, and we can purchase the water bottle filling station. That's what we did with the forty-one thousand.
So, so could we?
The question is, we can't enter into a contract for a consult.
Can you, could you enter, I mean, this isn't the best way to go, but could you enter into a contract with our solicitor's firm and GMB to help scope this project? I mean, in other words, because that you could do, you could put that into place immediately as a task order under, you know, an umbrella contract that we have with your firm and also with GMB. Not necessarily to do the work, but to actually scope it and.
And what they would need?
Well, the other thing they could do is, it could be a subcontractor to GMB. I mean, because mostly, like Janelle's saying, mostly this is an environmental science engineering firm with a little bit of litigation.
We use GMB to help us with phase one.
Okay.
Did they actually do it, or did they sub out?
Uh, I think the bill came to us. I think they helped facilitate just because we didn't have the contacts for it.
But as long as we would allocate it to the prime, if they choose to sub it out, that's their discretion.
I think you could do it either way then.
Okay, so because of timing, I think that's only, I think that's our only choice.
So my firm does use a subcontractor, environmental consultants, so it could be one of those initially. For example, the Camp Lejeune litigation, our twelfth department is involved in that, and I have a list of the environmental organizations they use for that, yeah. for that, yeah.
Yeah, there's plenty of them. Duffield and Associates, you know, does this stuff all the time.
Yeah. But I mean, in terms of timeframe, I think we have to go with, with our legal counsel's firm and GMB. This begs the question, all of our procurements need to go through a federal process, so we can always use them on any kind of federal or state money. That's the future. Right now, we got a clock ticking.
Can I just ask, whatever you allocate to us to be a round number, and whatever's left?
I was gonna suggest that.
So that it's not to the penny, because we're-
I was gonna say, why don't we give 50 to them, and then we?
Yes, you take the remaining, whatever the balance, yes.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. So can we get a motion on that basis then, is to allocate 50,000 to, to the BPW, and then we can make a final allocation to Ellen Lorraine, to execute on the ones that we've already mentioned, that we didn't give her authority to allocate on, and then to out, then the authority to execute on the 20K as she sees fit towards the environmental piece. So first, the cleanest one is the motion for BPW.
So I'll make a motion that we allocate 50,000 to the BPW to be used on the construction of the new water tower.
Okay. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilor Masco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now this one's a little bit more convoluted, there's two things to it. So we're giving her authority to allocate the remaining balance. Do we need to reference the number, like, the remaining balance to be around 20,000, or?
I think Ellen Lorraine has the exact number, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Is it 20, 20,200, or I don't know what that interest money is?
Well, we don't have November's interest posted yet.
Okay, so let's just say, the remaining balance plus what interest will be accumulated through the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay, towards the, towards the environmental study. Okay.
For the specific property.
Okay.
For the Army Reserve. Okay, I, I move that we, that we authorize the remaining balance plus interest received by December 31st, 2024, to the city manager, to allocate for an environmental study, specific to the Army Reserve property.
Second on that one?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So, I also, I think we should do one more to authorize Ellen Lorraine to, to enter into contracts for those ARPA allocations that we didn't mention previously. So, do you wanna just make a motion on that basis, or?
I make a motion that we authorize City Manager Ellen Lorraine McCabe to enter into the contracts that obligate us to these allocations of ARPA funds.
Thanks, Tim. Can we get a second on that one?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Sliwa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so, let's first take some, I don't see anyone left on the, online, right? So, Bill, that leaves you with your little black book there.
I left my official reporter note pad.
I love it.
Where to start? So, okay, first of all, with Milford Housing, did they give any indication that them getting back in is tied to the plan that Preston Shell presented? Since, since I, I just found out, you know, here at the meeting for the first time, that they're back in, so.
No, the only, I mean, we don't know what their motivation was, to get back in, or what their ability to get back in, but it was, they, they gave us a written, you know, sort of, I would call it a commitment to this project.
All right. And then the, the other question I had, oh, well, this is probably a good time to do an update on the Army Reserve Center, that was all processed before my time here. So, you said, January 6th, they're gonna come in and do lead abatement. What does that entail? If it's not a true environmental study, what, as far as, you know, what, what do they do?
Their understanding is, they did an environmental study of the building, and they found lead dust and lead in the building. And so therefore, they scheduled, they, they scheduled, they mentioned that they needed to do remediation, abatement, and they originally said there was gonna be in the spring. But I think they have, what I've heard, is they accelerated it, because they would really like to get this quote-unquote "off their books,"
Right.
the property. And so, January 6th is a new date, which I just learned yesterday.
Okay. And if you don't have a decision by December 20th on what you're gonna do with the building, what are they, what are they gonna do from there?
That's a good question. I, I do not know. But they mentioned Jan, December 20th as, you know, an answer from the city, whether you intend to keep the building or demolish the building.
Okay. All right, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Okay. So, I don't see any other press, so with that, I'll call for an adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
On, uh, second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Sliwa, all in favor? Aye. Okay.